Okay. I've got five thirty, so.
Recording in progress.
Alright, good evening and welcome to the November twelfth, twenty twenty four Eugene Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. My name is Tiffany Edwards, I'm the Chair of the Eugene Planning Commission and begin this evening. I'm going to call on Commissioner Isaacson for the city's land acknowledgement statement. Um, so Commissioner Isaacson, kicking it off to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since time at Emmen Memorial, the Calipulia people have been indigenous stewards to our region. Building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with the wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of the indigenous histories and to honor native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between eighteen fifty one and eighteen fifty five, Calipulia people were dispossessed by their indigenous homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed to the coastal coast reservation of Western, in Western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as the Calipulia Ilahi. Calipulia descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of the Rio Grande Community of Oregon and the Confederated Tribes of the Salits Indians of Oregon. They continue to make contributions to our communities here and across the island, across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty and all of all federally recognized tribal nations and the indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation. Therefore, the planning commission recognizes that what we do today will affect many generations who will come after us.
Alright, thank you Commissioner Isaacson. And thanks to everyone who's joining us in this virtual meeting format. Today, we're going to conduct elections and then we'll be holding deliberations on the Stormwater Code amendments. Anyone wishing to join this meeting online can do so by following the instructions listed on the agenda for this meeting. The planning commission meetings can also be viewed by watching the live stream available on our website or the broadcast on Comcast Channel twenty one. So moving to our first agenda item is a work session, uh, planning commission elections. And for this item, I'm gonna first kick it over to, uh, staff for, to Alyssa Hunter.
Alright, good evening, Planning Commission, uh, great to see you all. Uh, tonight, we are holding, uh, annual elections, so every year you vote for a chair and a vice chair, and the role of the chair is to run the meeting and, um, generally, and the vice chair will step in when the chair is not available. Traditionally, the vice chair, um, is, is promoted to chair if they are interested and you also desire. Um, and the other thing I just, actually, I think that's all I wanted to mention about the elections and, um, the duties are actually outlined in your bylaws, but like I said, they're, they're simple enough. And, um, the one last thing is that the chair, the new chair will assume, uh, those duties immediately upon election. So whoever you vote in tonight will be, uh, chairing the meeting. I'll turn it back to you Tiffany, Commissioner Edwards.
Thanks Alyssa. Okay, so, um, I wanna just start by saying that I really appreciated, uh, serving as chair. Uh, and it's an amazing role, so, um, I know that their, uh, Commissioner Lear has expressed interest in serving. And, but I wanna give the opportunity to the rest of the commissioners to see if anyone else is interested and wants to say a few words. Um, or I would be open to either, um, a motion and I'm happy to make one as well. So I'll just kinda open the floor and wait to see somebody unmute.
I'll move Commissioner Lear to be elected as our chair for the next year.
Oh, great, thank you Commissioner Isaacson.
I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, uh, are there, is there any discussion? Nothing, okay. Well, you guys have made this very easy, so, uh, I'm gonna, with that, I'll call the question. So all of those in favor, uh, please signal by raising your hand. Think I can see everybody? Alright, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, alright, just wanted to make sure you weren't gonna vote against yourself, alright? So it looks like the motion passes and, uh, with that, I'm going to hand the, the gavel over to Commissioner Lear to take it over from here.
Thank you so much, wanted to take the opportunity to just thank everyone for their incredible dedication and time and effort spent in this role. And to single out Chair Edwards for doing a phenomenal job, I'd hope to do it half as well as you. Uh, Chair Edwards, Commissioner Edwards, and as Commissioner Isaacson before you, you set a really high bar. So thanks, looking forward to getting started. And that conclude, oh, almost skipped the most important part here. We've got another half of the election to, to wrap up, so that'll be the election for the vice chair role. Um, I believe, let's see, did we have any input on that? Or does someone wanna make a motion to kinda get the conversation started? Yes?
Um, thank you Chair, uh, I, I would, I would like to nominate, um, to make a motion to, uh, nominate Commissioner Bailing as vice chair for the planning commission.
Thank you Commissioner Edwards. Anyone else want to throw their hat in the ring, or would we like to get a second in place?
I'll second it.
And seconded, and any discussion? Um, I'm assuming that Commissioner Bailing has expressed interest in this? Well, in that case, we can probably have a vote. Um, all of those in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Looks like that passes, I didn't see Commissioner Bailing over there, but, uh, passes unanimously, I think. Alright, well, we have a new chair and vice chair. Um, so that concludes our elections and we're now gonna move on to the second item of the evening, which is the deliberation on the Stormwater Code amendments. Um, for the next agenda item, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Gepper and Doug Singer for a brief introduction before we get into deliberations. Take it away.
Alright, thank you very much, uh, new Chair Lear, um, and hello everyone, my name's Jeff Gepper, I'm a senior planner here on the planning team. Um, I'm joined by Doug Singer, um, with Public Works Engineering and, uh, just to bring everybody that might be watching tonight, just as a little refresher. Um, on September twenty fourth, we had a public hearing on, um, so, a set of land use code amendments for the Stormwater Development Code, and this was all, um, kinda predicated on the need to bring us into compliance with our national, um, permitting, we, you know, it's called NPDS, National Pollution Discharge, something, something, something. MS four permit, I'm sure Doug will correct me on my acronyms there. Um, uh, but really, uh, what's happened is we, after that initial hearing, um, as you all may remember, we had some really good public comment, um, that helped us to make the code better, that's, you know, why, why this is a great public process. Um, so on October fifteenth, we actually published, uh, a newer version of the code that actually responded to and kinda iterated on those public comments. Um, and then following that version, uh, we continued, we received some additional testimony. Um, had some conversations with, uh, with the folks providing a public comment, um, and made one other kinda nuanced change. Um, to get the final version of the, or, uh, the draft code amendments that you, you see attached to the AIS tonight. Um, so Doug can go over with a little bit of a summary of what those amendments are, but I think it's a really good example of kinda the iterative process we've gone through. Um, to get to the point where we are tonight, um, and then following, uh, this, you'll be able to ask us questions, um, prior to deliberations or potentially making a motion. So I'd like to invite Doug to, uh, join us for, so just a brief summary of those changes that occurred.
Alright, well, thank you Jeff, um, thank you commissioners for having me at your meeting again tonight. This will be the third time we've talked about stormwater development standards and I appreciate all your support. Um, just a short refresher, the focus of the city's NPDS permit, Jeff was close. It's called the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. That's a mouthful. Um, the focus of the city's NPDS stormwater permit is to protect the water quality of our receiving waters. That's mainly Amazon Creek and, um, the Willamette River. Um, from pollutants and high flows, um, from impervious surfaces in our developed areas. The water quality priorities of the permit is to infiltrate runoff into the ground where possible and to filter runoff through extended filtration where full infiltration is not practical or required. At the September tenth planning commission meeting, at the work session, I provided an overview of our proposed code amendments to the city's stormwater development standards in order to achieve the goals of the NPDS permit. Like Jeff said, we received public testimony. Um, we've received testimony, uh, before the public hearing, during the public hearing, and since the public hearing. Um, staff have proposed, so now staff have proposed changes to the amendments in response to the testimony while maintaining the goals of our NPDS permit. Um, some specifics, our testimony raised concern that the changes in the minimum site infiltration rate requiring the infiltration of the full water quality design storm could develop stormwater facilities that would have long-term standing water. In other words, people could, we could require them to build a stormwater facility and that facility wouldn't drain very well, would take too long to drain. Um, our testimony noted that, that the requirement to provide extended filtration facilities with under drains where full infiltration is not feasible still provides for the infiltration while preventing that standing water. After discussing this with other engineers and reviewing our codes and standards, staff agree that keeping the required minimum infiltration rate at two inches per hour still meets the NPDS permit requirements while building facilities that are practical. Uh, this addresses the, the testimony concern. Another example is testimony raised concern that the amended language would require new or replaced impervious surfaces that drain to existing approved water quality facilities would require updating or new water quality facilities. Uh, staff addressed this concern through updating language that recognizes and accepts the existing water quality facilities. Another example is testimony raised concern that extended filtration facilities could be required in situations that were unpractical or could cause drainage issues, especially onto neighboring properties. So staff addressed this concern by adding adjustment review criteria for extended filtration facilities. Uh, the city made other minor edits to the proposed amendments that reflect comments and concerns or clarify language. Um, thank you for your time this evening, I'm gonna turn it back over to Jeff.
Thanks Doug, appreciate that, um, and I'll just say too that we did receive some public testimony related to some of the questions around, uh, the findings of fact that's attached to the, the draft, um, code amendments as well as the question of vesting. Um, and, you know, we addressed those in the memo. Um, but if there's any follow-up questions, we're happy to answer those today or try to provide any clarity to, to help you in your, um, making your recommendation. And so with that, I'll turn it back to Chair Lear and, uh, yeah, thank you.
Thanks Jeff and thanks Doug for the information. We'll now open for deliberations on this topic and we can begin with any questions commissioners have for staff. Um, also staff did provide a recommended motion in tonight's AIS. If anyone would like to put that motion on the table, you may do so. I believe it's on page five toward the bottom of the agenda packet. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you Chair Lear, um, I have a question and it's probably for Emily, um. It's related to, and I'm, I apologize, I'm scrolling a bit on, um, my packet here. But it had to do with the issue that was brought up by Teresa Bishow about, um, the applicability of the, of the goal, of the planning goals, specifically planning goals nine and ten. Specifically, goal nine, um, and I am curious about, because wha- what's, what it says here, uh, as an explanation by staff as to why this, uh, code does comply has to do with, that there is no, that, let's see. It requires evaluate the supply of land and demand on commercial land relative to community economic objectives. So basically saying that because it does not impact the supply of industrial or commercial lands that therefore it doesn't impact, um, this goal. And I, I, I don't know that I entirely agree with that. I think that there are a lot of things that actually add a lot of regulatory burden to businesses that really do provide, to, to, really do hinder economic development. Having said that, I'm just kinda curious as to what the city's role and responsibility to, it, it seems very ambiguous and, and so I'm just curious if there is like any, any very specific, not so subjective criteria that a city is required to do to comply with goal seven or goal, goal nine as it relates to that.
Yeah, I, I think what you're raising actually falls more into the, the cost, the expense of maybe constructing commercial properties. That is more of a policy matter, um, statewide planning goal nine is a lot like statewide planning goal ten, which you guys have worked a lot more with. But if you think back to our work with both urban reserves and setting the urban growth boundary, it all sort of is around these goals requirement that we have twenty years worth of supply of land that correlates to what our jurisdiction needs. Um, in terms of housing for goal ten or commercial land or industrial land for, for goal nine. Um, so there are specific provisions in the goal. Um, and those are met by having that supplier and making sure that it's, you know, buildable and that, that's all the work that you do in growth planning. The issues and, and this does not take land off that inventory. Um, especially because of the hierarchy which takes into account, uh, whether or not comply, whether or not providing one of these facilities would make the land essentially unbuildable because it would take up too much space. Then you get knocked down, you don't, you don't have to build that under this provision, you know, you get to work on and Doug might not like how generally I'm stating this, but the hierarchy makes sure that the land is still buildable. And, and that is really the concern of goal nine. Um, what you're bringing up, i- are there good issues for you guys to think about and discuss, but they're not legal issues? Okay. Alright, thank you.
Does that answer your question Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bailey?
Thank you. Um, Doug, I wanna tell you, I really appreciated the memo that you added, um, after the draft amendments. Explaining response to the most current testimony was very useful to me. I did end up with still a couple of questions. Um, with regard to vesting, that issue was addressed because of the state, I believe you said it was a state requirement that anything older than ten years is not vested and will need to comply with current code. Um, I had been concerned about that because the documents that were attached to the public testimony were dated two thousand and four. And it seemed to me it would be entirely inappropriate for twenty-year-old properties to not be brought up to code. I mean, I would even like to say less than ten years, but the state law is ten years, then so be it. It's, it's better than vesting everything forever. So, that was helpful information. And I want a couple of clarifications. Um, Bishow raised the question of, and I think you addressed this, the time between the tentative and the final. And I, I think your response was, whatever was in place when the tentative approvals were given would be honored? Um, do you wanna answer that one and then I have another?
I promised Doug that I would address most of the vesting questions if they came up. Uh, Doug, let me, if you wanna answer anything, you know, okay. Um, so you're right, Commissioner Bailing, the, there is a state statute that applies to subdivisions that says that when a lot develops within a subdivision, um, it gets to develop according to the standards, the building standards, the development standards, like setbacks and heights and those kinda things that were in place when the subdivision was approved, if they build it within ten years of the approval. So that is the state law for subdivisions. Um, there are other times when under our own code, that, that may extend further and that happens when, uh, for example, a development has explicitly shown something in its development plans that we've approved, you've approved, um, that locks them in. So if a subdivision showed a footprint of, uh, the house that's gonna go on the lot. And let's say that, that footprint of the house was within two feet of the lot line. And those plans get approved and we sign a, we sign a, um, development agreement that we always carry out for subdivisions. Um, and they don't build that lot for twelve years. So the ten-year statutory grandfathering no longer applies to that lot. But because that applicant, under our code, we enable them to comply, to, to a, address a, a standard at the time of subdivision if they want to. And that applicant did, it showed the standard, it met the two-foot standard that was in place at time of subdivision. Then even past the ten years, because they explicitly showed that and we explicitly approved it, they get to build it that way. So I just wanna make that clear. Your question relates to another, vesting is very complicated. Another issue that comes up, you may be aware of this or may not, I don't know, but for us, when we have, and actually across the state, when you have that two-step approval pro- process where you have a tentative plan and then a final plat, the, almost, the main thing that you have to address at final plat is, is it consistent with a tentative plan? And that includes any conditions that were imposed on the tentative plan. But because it's just, it's made that way, that's how the process works, it's always referential back to that tentative plan. And so state law, the, the courts have said, yes, so we, they get the benefit. If we change the, the regulations in between those two, that doesn't nullify the tentative plan that we approved, and that's really where the meat and the details of that development live. So that is another way that, you know, vesting is kind of a big word and we're overusing it here, but for our purposes, that's another way that something might get vested. And there are more.
What?
And there are other ways.
Yeah, okay, that's good, thank you for that clarification. Um, wanted to see the other thing that I had a question about, the two inches, you addressed that, the delay between. Oh, is any, this was something else that Bishow brought up, is there anything different applying to parking lots? That was a question that she raised and improving a parking lot, taking away a parking lot in order to build a parking structure would not kick in the new amended codes?
So, um, the answer is yes, and like every answer, it's complicated, right? I mean, every, every, every situation depends on the situation. Um, generally speaking, the, the stormwater development standards are are in place anytime you, you, you build new or replace more than a thousand square feet of impervious surface. So if you're gonna build something that creates or replaces a thousand square feet of impervious surface, where you get a development permit, or you do, or you apply, or you do a land use application, the stormwater development standards apply, then there are different criteria and there are exemptions to certain things and certain activities. So the answer is yes, they apply, and then there can be exemptions depending on the exact situation. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you, and I wanna thank you for all your work on this. I think stormwater management is extremely important, very crucial and critical and as the rain pours down on us this week, we could all be appreciating everything that you've done. So thank you for all your hard work and the staff, all of you for meeting with the people who are raising their, um, testimony, I'm sure they won't all be pleased with the responses, but I, I very much appreciate all the work you've done, thank you.
Yes, well, you're, you're very welcome Commissioner Bailing, and I really do appreciate your, your questions and your knowledge in stormwater, so thank you.
Commissioner Ramey?
Thank you.
Um, also echo all the good, good words about the staff work and making it clear that it's, it's a lot of, a lot of. Rules and regulations, so it's good to see that we're listening to the professionals in the field and making adjustments as they're appropriate. I'm, I'm still a little um, curious about the vesting issue. Which I think I've known as grandfathered before, is similar idea. Um, and I'm most familiar with it in building codes. So if you have a house that was built to a building code, say in nineteen sixty, and that building code changed. You go back to renovate the house in nineteen, oh, two thousand twenty-four. You don't have to make the floor height taller because the code changed about how tall the floors have to be between. So that's a building code example and that, as far as I know, never changes. And I just want to be sure we're not, we're either, one of two things, the tenure rule seems like a, that's a state rule. Uh, and the other rules are sort of, well, it's all in the details and we think we've, we've met a lot of those. But I want to be sure we're not sort of applying something different here than we are in other places in the code. And or making a, a, are there a lot of these examples, are there just a few? Or do we have any idea with the scope, how many of these things are affected by um, lack of vesting or? But it sounds like we're doing some, so anyway, so two, two parts of that question. What is the scope of the problem we're dealing with and how is it different from what we do with building codes?
Uh, uh, Doug, I'll, I'll go ahead and take a, take a shot at the first part and then I'm actually gonna kind of hand it off to, to you and Emily. But um, Commissioner Ramey, your question about the kind of scale of, of that work, I mean, we, we process. Uh, probably twenty to thirty plus applications that could potentially put forward enough information during a land use application process. To um, be reviewed for compliance with applicable stormwater standards at the time of like, the tentative, you know, the land use approval. Um, and so you take that back a long time and that could be a lot of them. Um, however, oftentimes people don't opt into that, they actually, they say like, hey, we don't know exactly what our stormwater is going to look like right now. Um, so we're going to demonstrate that we can meet it. And then when we get down the road, we'll meet the applicable code at the time that we do it. And so that's actually more often the case that we see. And so that takes the scale of, you know, tons of land use applications down to just a, a kind of a more narrow subset. Um, and a lot of the examples that were provided in the public testimony perhaps do fall into that realm of where, yeah, they showed us the, the, the stormwater design. Um, and they're allowed to construct that as was designed and approved at that time. Um, and so all it really is to say is that it's, it's a very serious case by case example. And that's exactly what our staff down in Building Permit Services are looking at, is really trying to. They had to go in and they had to look at, I mean, I have a couple sitting on my desk, uh, right here, here's a performance agreement. Um, that somebody's going to be looking at in the future. And that's their basis for whether or not uh, stormwater was kind of a, reviewed and quote unquote vested through that land use approval. Um, and so all it is to say, like, in our world of land use, that's highly dependent. And that's, uh, never the, the best answer, but that's kind of the answer for us. Um, I think the question you're asking. Um, for the, that I'll hand off to Doug and, and please correct me if I'm wrong. It's like, you have an existing house and you want to build an addition to that house, what stormwater rules are applying to that addition? Cause obviously, the stormwater rules are only ever applying to, you know, the new impervia- new and um, replaced impervious surfaces, right? So Doug, can you um, elaborate on, on that example?
Yes, Jeff, I was going to elaborate on that. So, exactly to your building code, to your building code example. My understanding, and I'm not an expert in building code, I'm a civil engineer and I know a lot about stormwater. But in building code, right, if, if you have an older house, it met a certain building code when it was built. If you go to do work on it, most of the work can relate to the building code that existed at the time. You don't have to upgrade your current house. If you build an addition, the addition, the addition to the house has to meet current building code. There's things like insulation and requirements and structural and electrical, but you don't have to bring the rest of your house. Up to current building code when you do that, that addition, does that make sense? But the addition has to meet the new code. Now, if there's a floor level issue, I, I, I mean, I don't think that's an issue, right? We're not going to make you build one, you know, you know, one side of your house two feet higher than the other, right? So stormwater is the same, if, if you have an existing house. And you didn't, and, and there were no stormwater development standards at the time, or the stormwater development standards are different. You don't have to change how the stormwater is being managed from your existing house. But if you do an add-on, if you add on to your house or build another structure on your property, that's more than a thousand square feet. Then the stormwater development standards are triggered for that addition or for that additional structure. And for the additional amount of surface area that you construct. So, it's, it's very much the same, does that, does that make sense?
I, I think so, thank you Doug for that clarification and um. I think I'm, I, the scenario I'm curious about is the one where there is a, there is a subdivision. And it was designed to a certain standard, making assumptions about, or actually what the code is at the time. And now the code has changed, and so trying to build out that subdivision could be problematic under the terms of the new code. So that was the scenario I was most interested in learning about, how many of those are there? And do we have, do we have a way to, is there viable workaround for that particular scenario?
There's, there's never going to be a situation where these stormwater standards. Are, operate to prevent the construction of something that has already been explicitly approved. That's the nature of, of, of land use law and how, and, and how it's applied here in Eugene and probably everywhere. Um, you know, it, the, the nuances come in when, for example, you adopt. You, the, the city council adopts a standard that has never existed before. And so then there is sometimes analysis as to whether or not it, the, the city needs to waive that or exempt somehow. Because imposing it on this particular development will prohibit what they, what we've approved. Um, that's not likely going to be the case with the stormwater quality standard. We've had quality standards since, boy, Doug, was it two thousand fourteen when quality standards were added or two thousand four? I'm not sure, but for some time, for more than ten years or at least ten years. Um, and the nature of, of them is they don't take up much. If they're going to take up too much space to actually use the, the property the way it was approved to be used. Then there's an exemption that, that not, that allows for a different type of facility to be used. And ultimately, if no facility could be built while allowing what's already, already been approved. They may pay an SDC that another developer wouldn't because that individual is now relying on the city's system. Um, and Commissioner Ramey and others, I did want to point out, in, in response to the testimony about this. One of the things that was changed um, in your, in tonight's packet, it's on page three. But it's in the applicability standards for the stormwater regulations. And one of the exemptions for needing to comply is where there's con- where construction of a new. Or replaced impervious surface will be served by an existing city-approved stormwater quality facility. That was designed in size to treat the stormwater runoff from the proposed impervious surface. So if when a development was approved and it had a water quality facility that addressed our standards. And it was designed to meet the kind of development that, you know, the level of development that is now being proposed. They don't need to do anything else under these standards.
Wow.
Doug, is that right, Doug?
You, you got that right.
That, that exemption, that's a, a overall exemption that stated in the applicability standards and exemptions. At nine point six seven nine two, subsection two, B, four.
Horrific, okay, thank you and, and my apologies to the rest of the commission for dragging us down that, that track. But um, that was the one that caught my attention, so very good answers, thank you, as always, great job.
Commissioner Ramey, I, I do appreciate your question, I think there, like everybody always says, there's no stupid question and. Uh, this is very good discussion, thank you.
Yeah, I thought there'd be a lot of questions about the vesting information specifically, and it seems like it's pretty complex. That was actually a really helpful explanation, Emily and, and Doug too. Cause I was having a, struggling a little bit after reading through materials to kind of understand it, but I think that adds a lot of clarity to it. I had one question, which is, it may be too difficult to answer, but something I'm curious about, so if you happen to have knowledge about it, it'd be really curious. Which is just trying to understand um, what percentage of this is based on the stormwater discharge development standards? And NPDES versus state law? So would we expect, you know, that these standards would look pretty similar in the rest of the state of Oregon and pretty much across the country? Or, you know, would, do you think there might be a pretty significant divergence between Oregon and Florida or Texas or something like that?
I, I do think each state is very different. Um, and on the west coast, you know, Oregon, Washington and California are very similar. I would say, you know, every city and every agency has different development standards. In Oregon specifically, I'll try, try not to get too, too down into the details here. But in Oregon specifically, there's, there's basically two levels of public agencies that are. Regulated by the NPDES permits through Oregon DEQ. There, there are what are called phase ones, the city of Eugene is a phase one. Which are public agencies with over a hundred thousand population. So, um, so if you think about public agencies over a hundred thousand population. City of Eugene is in that category, and then there's the category of public agencies over fifty thousand. So, um, phase ones and phase twos have very different NPDS permits. And all the phase ones have very individualized permits. So the city of Eugene has worked with Oregon DEQ for about twenty years. Developing our permit that makes sense for us. Now, when it comes to stormwater development standards, everybody has different codes and standards. But pretty much, all the agencies require, you know, green infrastructure or low impact development standards. That do require infiltration and filtration of stormwater. It's just, each one has a little bit different of a code, a little bit different of, of requirements. And a different stormwater management.
But each one of these municipalities is kind of developing that structure? Okay, that's interesting.
Exactly, um, you know, based on the needs of the community and the, the, the stormwater runoff. And the amount of impervious surface area and where the water goes, they're, they're, they're all individualized. But, but we work with other public agencies like city of Portland, um, Clean Water Services, which is up in Washington County. Um, city of Gresham, city of Corvallis, city of Salem, to understand their standards. And to develop our standards so that there is some uniformity up and down the Willamette Valley. Even though each agency has a slightly different program.
Okay, thanks for that additional information, that's really interesting. Curious, does anybody else have any questions at this point? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, I just have one more. Um, I'm looking for the part that I read that, so it, it's my understanding that, um, kind of looking. Thinking about the vesting issue and I think I, I'm clear on that, but. Um, Emily, you mentioned something that made me think of this, so I, I'm, I'm going to ask the question. Uh, let's say you take the, the, the PUD for Crescent Village as an example, something that was, you know, twenty years old. And between then and now, in addition to the, the cha- whatever changes that end up happening here with the stormwater. Are there other things that they would have had to bring up to, up to compliance that have changed in those twenty years? It sounds like, you know, because they're required to comply a- at the time of permitting. That they would have, that there could be a number of other things that, that would have sort of essentially, in their, in the words that, that was provided to testimony. Change the goalpost on them. And I'm just trying to speak to that issue because I, I don't know that this is an isolated issue, I think it's unfortunate. But to me, it seems like that kind of, I, I, I would assume that that happens pretty frequently when you have, have an approval. That's, you know, ten plus years old, and even, even if it's not ten years old, you still are going to have to bring. It, you know, whatever, whatever ends up being developed has to be up to the current standards at the time. Does that?
Yeah, I mean, if a developer is really, really relying on current standards at the time of approval. Um, then either they, you know, it's one of the reasons that Eugene's code uniquely. Allows developers to address. Even pretty specific development standards in their land use applications. It enables them to lock in if they explicitly show it and it's approved. But if they don't, then yes, it happens all the time and, and it's, it's calculated, I would imagine. Um, you know, especially where maybe there's a subdivision that's going to be a bill to sue, you know, or so, you know, that they're going to sell the lots. For future develop, for future people to purchase. They, none of those people have an expectation that they get to go back to old code after ten years. Um, so it ha- it does happen all the time. It, it is more difficult, like I said, when there are, it, it's one thing when a street width goes. From an allowable twenty feet to a new required thirty feet and we approved a twenty foot, you know, that's pretty cut and dry. But when there's a new standard, if we started requiring, you know, I don't know. Some new thing that we've never really had before, then it gets difficult to determine what, what they're vested in. Um, the other thing that come, can also come into play is. Courts will sometimes look at whether or not there has been a substantial reliance on those old standards. That was reasonable and not calculated to avoid new ones. And that was, is so significant that they have financially, you know, vested in the old ones. But that, those decisions are made by the courts, we don't usually make those calls on our own, so it, it does happen all the time.
Okay, um, just real quick, I'd just like to say, I mean, I, I, I struggle with just the, the concept of moving goalposts on. Cause I know how much time and expense and effort and it's, it's, it's not a perfect science, but you can't always. Um, you know, know how something is going to be, the development of something that's, that's tentatively approved at one point in time. And so I, what I do appreciate though is the willingness of staff to kind of uh, respond to the testimony. I really did feel like everything that was um, brought up had, you know, at least been explained and, and, and it. And there's been a, 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 an attempt made to kind of um, mitigate those concerns and, and everything else. And, and I just, I also want to state for anybody who's listening that, I mean, this isn't something that the city has decided to just tack, take on. Because, you know, we didn't have anything to do, I think that it was pre- made pretty clear that these are regulatory changes that are coming to us. That we are kind of forced to have to comply with and adjust to and, and incorporate into the code. And so I just, I'm, you know, just don't want that to be forgotten in all of this. But um, I just really appreciate the work and I really appreciate the folks who did weigh in and, and kind of share. It's incredibly helpful for me, who is a layperson and does not understand all the, the, all of how stormwater work. But um, I really, I appreciate everybody, so just want to leave it at that, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Beeson? He got muted on, I think.
I was getting better at not doing.
There we go.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion. Um, I'd like to move uh, that the planning commission recommend that the Eugene City Council adopt. The proposed stormwater development standards, land use code amendments and findings. As included in attachment A to the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four AIS. Regarding stormwater development standards.
Great, we have a motion, is there a second? I'll go ahead and second that one. It looks like you were jumping in as well, Commissioner Bailey?
Yeah, and if I could, yeah, can I speak to you just for a second? Yeah, and if I could, yeah, could I speak to you just for a second?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, not, uh, I I um I certainly agree with most everything that's been said tonight. I think. We've uh, I think at this point, we've we've talked about this, uh, I think at three different sessions. Um. There's been a a lot of good material produced by the staff explaining what we're needing to do here. And why we're needing to do it and how. Uh, there's been a public hearing. I think there's been opportunity for the community to weigh in, certainly interested members of the community who work in this area and provide comments and ask questions. Um, as near as I can tell from going through all the material, it appears that the staff has um addressed. Um, I think pretty specifically a lot of the comments, a lot of the questions that were received. So it it seems like at this point, uh, in a good position to pass this along uh with a recommendation to the council that they. That they approve it. I would also just echo what's been said, the the work by the staff and and all the material has. Um, you know, I think it's just sort of created this foundation for us to, you know, be able to do this and uh. Address this clearly. So with that, I'll make that make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeson. I'll add to, in addition to the necessity of complying with the permit requirements. Um, this definitely provides a new appreciation for civil engineers and the complexity of your work, so thank you for. Spending the time to decode as much of this as you could for for us. Does anyone else have any um deliberative thoughts? Or wanna speak to that motion? No, so it looks like we'll take a vote at this point. I'm all in favor of the motion as read by Commissioner Beeson. Please raise your hand. I can see everybody here. And anyone opposed, please raise your hand. So it looks like that passes unanimously, and I think you've got the language that you need there, Alyssa. With that, uh, thank you all. I'd like to hand it back to staff for a quick explanation of the next steps for this process.
Thank you, Chair Lear. Um, just as a reminder to everybody, this is a recommendation to the city council. The city council will. Uh, hold their own public hearing regarding these pub uh these um proposed land use code amendments. And that will occur, uh, we're forecasting that to occur in January. Notice will be provided uh for that public hearing as well. Um, in accordance with our code and uh. Then following the public hearing, uh, the city council will have a chance to also deliberate and then potentially um take action and make a decision on these land use code amendments. So. Um, if you'd like any more information, please feel free to uh reach out to either Doug or I and we can provide you more information. Or there's good information on the stormwater website um uh at the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff and staff. And with that, this item is concluded for tonight. We'll move on to our final i- item for the evening, which are items from commission and from staff. So I think we can start off with, are there any items or info to share from any fellow commissioners? Commissioner Fragola?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I I wanted to let everybody know that. Tonight is my last planning commission meeting. Um, I am now the representative-elect for uh House District Eight. And thank you, and will be sworn in on January thirteenth, but um there's a lot of work to do between now and then. Um, it is bittersweet to be leaving the planning commission, but Alyssa did remind me I was gonna term out this coming summer anyway. Um, but I have really enjoyed serving on the planning commission. Um, and I look forward to continuing um this type of work at the state level, particularly. Um, continuing to advocate for for housing. Um, and I've I've really appreciated all of the staff and. Um, really recognize the hard work that you you put in to making this all work, not only for the planning commission, but for our community. Um, and it's been great to serve with so many of you. I think um Commissioner Remy. And Commissioner Edwards, you've probably been on the board with me the entire time, so it's it's great to. Have you still here and it's been great to get to know other folks as well as some of the the folks who left. So. Thanks so much. Um, it's it's really been an honor and a pleasure to serve.
Uh, follow on to Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Chair Lear. Um, representative, I just would like to to congratulate you. Very excited for you. Lost for us, but a big win for the community, so um. It has been a absolute pleasure serving with you and you're right, for day one, we had the same day one and we've been. Um, colleagues on the planning commission for all these years, so uh it's been absolutely amazing to work with you. And I've always appreciated your insight and you will be very much missed, but um. I'm looking forward to working with you and your with with your new hat, so very much looking forward to that.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Remy.
Well, just, I just wanted to echo Commissioner Edwards's comments where. We're part of the same class, you know, I don't even remember what year it was, but whatever year that was, we were, we were a part of it and. It's it's really been an honor to be with with you, particularly uh Representative-elect Fragola. Um, you have brought to this commission an ability to understand how what we're doing. Can be integrated into the community and can be integrated into the community in ways that I think went beyond what was being done before and I. I don't know if you realize this, but for me anyway, it was pretty obvious that you were really tuned in to what is happening out there on the ground. And how can we get, how can we reach people? How will these things affect people? And how can we be sure that their needs are looked after? And so I look forward to you carrying that out in the legislature. And I just want you to know that the our class has your back, so if you need anything from us, just let us know, we're always there for you.
Thank you so much for that.
I wanted to add my thanks and congratulations as well, um Representative-elect Fragola for your. Hard work and dedication to Eugene and your awesome perspective and insight and. Though I haven't had as much time to get to know you, it's been an honor to work with you and I'm personally so excited to see what you accomplished for our community in your new office and. Wish you the absolute best in this role.
Thanks.
I just wanted to echo the same thing. Uh, when I came into the planning commission, I um I really looked to uh to you, Commissioner Fragola, and now Representative-elect. Uh, to really help guide me when as a as a newbie and I I was so uh thrilled to get to know you as a friend and. Um, and as a colleague on this board and I will miss you, but I look forward to your leadership in Salem. Take care.
Thank you.
And I appreciate very much how you were the person from the planning commission who reached out to me. To give me a little um orientation and information and. Help to bring me up to speed and welcome me to the planning commission. It really made a huge difference and was very much appreciated as. I was thrown off the deep end and pretty lost.
Oh, my pleasure.
Wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me also say, um, Representative-elect. Representative Fragola, I I've appreciated serving with you and getting to know you. I've appreciated your insights, uh. For me, particularly related to uh the work we've been doing on housing and as. Commissioner Remy said, your insights into the community, so on, so, but we're uh appreciate it and we're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Just wanna jump in really quick and also just express the appreciation of the whole planning division. Uh, we just felt really grateful. That we have the opportunity to work with you since July of twenty eighteen. I looked that up today, so that's what you guys are. Um, just appreciate your leadership, your thoughtfulness, your citywide perspective, your focus on equity. And elevating the voices of the underserved communities. Also, you've been a really quick study. Land use is complicated. And I I will, in the beginning, we're like, okay, will it, will an elementary school teacher understand this? And then pretty quickly, we stopped. Using that as our lens when we wrote things. So you you just caught on. It was, it was very impressive. And also what's really impressive is some of the projects that you have made a lasting impact on that are gonna. Live beyond your time here at the planning commission. I mean, you've been intimately involved with middle housing. With the climate-friendly and equitable communities, with the Greenway Code Amendments, with River Road, with urban reserves. And I'm sure there are more, but the pandemic, I can't remember what happened before then, so um, you know, we've done, you have been a part of some. Really big, big decisions here at the planning commission and at the city and, I mean, we're seeing those things hap- you know. It's making a huge impact, so just thank you for all of your time here. Um, we do have a plaque for you. You can't see it cuz now, of course, I've got my thing behind me, but there we go. Um, we'll get that to you.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so thank you and yeah, I'm sorry this isn't in person, but uh I'm glad, I'm glad at least you have a last meeting with us. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Alyssa, and um I think you were gonna um let people know about the process for.
Yes, yeah, so um you were correct, your position actually ends um. Would end on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. And um so rather than trying to hurry up and get somebody who could serve for a couple of months and then have to. Actually also be applying for the next term, we're gonna hold um your position vacant until. And then as part of the citywide recruitment for boards and commissions, that will be one of our two vacancies. So you're gonna be down to six planning commissioners um through until July first. Um, we do have, in addition to Commissioner Fragola's position, which will be the vacant one, um Commissioner Bailey. Yours actually um expires at the end of of June twenty twenty-five as well, and so. You have the opportunity to reapply for that. Um, so those will be our two positions that will be. Be open and um under recruitment. So, yes, so we're gonna be, we're gonna be down one person for a little bit, unfortunately. Some big shoes to fill though, for sure.
Well, this is gonna be a tough act to follow, but any other items from fellow commissioners?
Alright, I just have a few um just schedule updates. Um, so you're, let's see. Actually, you're done for November, so you have about a month off. Enjoy your, enjoy your little break. Um, and then you'll be back on the tenth. To, we'll be giving you an update on urban growth strategies, including the comprehensive plan, housing need and the the diagram. And then back again on December seventeenth, is that the right date? Yep, and that's a Tuesday, that'll be a public hearing on a plan amendment. Privately initiated plan amendment. Um, and then then you have a break until January. Um, in terms of things going on at council, tomorrow at the noon work session. Uh, we'll be presenting on the climate-friendly areas recommendation and asking council for. To to vote on their selection for an option, as you remember, you all um selected or recommended option two. And that's what the recommendation is going before them tomorrow. And then later this month, actually next week, um on the eighteenth is the public hearing on the middle housing remand. And then action for that is scheduled on November twenty-fifth.
Did I do it for items from staff? Any other staff members? Thank you. Uh, with that, this meeting of the planning commission is now adjourned. Hope everyone has a great week.